Test, test.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's city council workshop meeting for Monday, December eighth. Um, I believe we should be live on the live stream. I believe I got clarification or uh did uh hear that uh we are live streaming. So everyone tonight we are going to be uh holding uh applicant interviews for the District One vacancy. Uh we have uh five of our constituents uh interviewing tonight. Uh we'll have four tomorrow night as one person did drop out uh from consideration. Um pretty simple process, everyone, where we have a list of questions in front of us. Uh there are technically about seven, seven questions with one of them just being if there's any questions for us. Um I I thought the simplest way to do this would be I would just ask the first question and then move to my left. Question two, question three, question four. Uh member Ward you'd be five and member Russell you'd be six unless you anybody had any objection to the way that we handle questions this evening. No? Anybody good with them? All right. Well, everyone, we uh let me go ahead and just introduce our first applicant tonight. We have Rick Somerson, uh a District One uh resident. Uh Rick, is there anything that you want to add before we get into the questions tonight?
Uh sure. Yeah. Hi, I'm Rick Somerson. I live on Fox Street between Eastman and Dartmouth. I've owned a home here in Anglerwood for just over two years. Uh my husband and I have been involved on some of the committees uh in that time. I'm super excited to be part of this tonight. Thank you for um being here, for allowing us all to have this chance uh to speak and for uh setting a bar appropriately high for an appointment. Um I think that this is a great process. It's exciting to see that nine now nine of us are in this um and are interested in supporting the district so.
All right. Well, thank you very much, Mr. Somerson. So we do have thirty minutes for this uh interview. Uh so I will give a time check once we get closer to about two or three minutes left um in the event that we are running long. All right. So my first question for you, Mr. Somerson, is uh what qualities, characteristics, and vision do you believe you have that make a you believe you have that make a compelling case for your candidacy as a District One council member? And please provide any examples where possible.
Great. Thank you for the question. Um, I have been a communications and outreach professional for about twenty-five years. Um, my uh entire career has been spent being involved with uh not just speaking, which I think a lot of people think the words are part of communications, but it's really the listening that is uh important. And so being able to listen and bring different voices to the table, uh, find ways to navigate challenges, um, those are some of the things that I think I could bring to this seat, especially uh during a time where um there's some transition and uh and a lot of change here in Anglewood. And I uh and I think um I would uh bring that to the table in terms of thinking about uh how to incorporate uh feedback from District One into the processes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Somerson. Uh, I'll pass it over to Mayor Protem.
Thank you, and good to meet you, Mr. I met you before, but good to have you here tonight, Mr. Somerson. And um, I got a four-parter here for you. So I will read them all off, but if you need me to come back and freshen them up, I'm happy to do that. What do you think the city does well, or its assets? What do you think could be improved? And do you have any goals based on these observations? And what would you like to accomplish in two years as a member of City Council?
Great, thank you. Um, I think the city uh is doing the transfer. I think the city's doing transportation law right now. I think the reinvention of BERT. I think the bike lanes on Floyd, the commitment to intermodal uh opportunities to move around the city. Um, again, knowing that people should have a choice. They can choose their car. They can choose to walk. They can choose to bike. And I think that choice is really important. Um, viewing that project, um, it's clear that there was a lot of thought given to making sure that people in Anglewood have those choices. And I think those choices are really important. And you see that reflected in other parts of the city as well. So I think what, one thing that is being done well is that um putting people's choices uh as a priority um in executing policies, ordinances, um, is really important. Um, I think in terms of improvement, um, I think it's fair to say there's, there should always be improvement. I think the conversations that are happening around the district plan with City Center and the Medical Center and Downtown, um, and then what Downtown means and how to make Downtown further down South Broadway, which is really important. Um, so I think the improvements that are being discussed there and the hurdles that are still left to get over, I think um are, are there and are helpful for making sure that people can um actually um not just buy into what is being done, but actually participate and use what's being done. Um, and um, and probably understanding a little bit more about City Council for uh folks who don't have time to come to meetings and don't have time to sit on committees. Some of the feedback that I was gathering over the last few weeks, uh, I'd asked, you know, what, what, if I were to be appointed or run and win, what would you, what would you want? You know, what would you expect from a district counselor? Um, the first response was generally, we don't know. Um, and so I think doing my part to continue to uh hit the streets and uh meet people and again, bringing voices to the table doesn't mean that there needs to be a thousand people at public comment. What that means is it's our job as an elected official or an appointed official to go get that feedback from our constituents and bring that to the table um to be able to have substantive conversations. I think my goals uh would be just that. I think it's going to be really important over the next couple of years to be in conversation, not just with each other, but with our district constituents. And um, I really believe that I have the skill sets to, to do that, um, to listen, to communicate, to hear, to stand strong when needed, and to compromise when needed. Uh, and I think compromise is a huge part of it. Um, I'm someone who remains curious, usually one step further than a lot of people. Uh, and I would absolutely bring that to the seat uh in terms of asking questions and wanting to know more information about what was in front of us. Um, and then uh voting accordingly based on uh the information that was presented and the responses to those questions. Um, accomplish in two years. Um, um, I think it's probably wrapped up in the goals. I think if I, if I were able to get out and walk every street in the district and meet as many people as I possibly could over the next couple of years and hold town halls and do the things that I'm hoping to do if having the privilege to be appointed or having to run and be elected, um, I think bringing more people into the process and being aware of the process even when they can't be here would be an accomplishment.
Very good. Thank you. Member Prang.
Good evening, Mr. Somerson. Thank you for being here. I, it looks like I have a two-fold question for you, so not quite as many as the last one. Describe to us what you think the key responsibilities of a council role are um in representing District One. And what kind of time do you think it would take and how would you utilize your time to understand and represent the city well?
Thank you. Um, I um believe you know that the responsibilities of the City Council are uh to manage the uh city manager and to do the budget. So beyond that, um, I think um there's opportunities for us to provide constituent services, make sure that folks in our districts and around Anglewood are getting what they need and are informed. Um, so I think informing folks is an extremely important part of the responsibility. So I think there are the responsibilities that are outlined and uh the charters and whatnot. Um, but then there are the responsibilities that I would inherently bring, and I've seen all of you inherently bring to the role in terms of uh wanting to understand, to learn, to represent your constituencies, um, and to take strong opinions when needed on items that have large impact to the community, uh, a long-term impact in some cases. Uh, it's good to be methodic when there's long-term impact, though. Um, in terms of how I would utilize my time, uh, as I mentioned previously, um, I would set out on, um, if, again, privileged enough to be appointed, I would set out on December sixteenth to start meeting as many people as possible, um, holding as many uh one-on-one opportunities and town hall type of opportunities. Uh, again, I would obviously have to check in with lawyers to figure out what was right and not right in that interim space. But uh, following that, uh, those rules and procedures, uh, doing everything I possibly could uh to continue doing what I've been doing um in the last month and a half in terms of meeting with residents and meeting with businesses, um, but also uh being able to take that uh one step further by then being able to bring those voices back to the work starting on January fifth.
Thank you.
Member Bethel.
I'm gonna claim uh question three in that case. Uh, can you give us an example of a time you had to work on a team to accomplish a goal where there are vastly different views of that goal or how to get there? Tell us what you did, what you accomplished, and what you learned. No, that's three.
You have question four.
Yes, but four was just asked. Thank you. It's like something could change without me. Uh, I apologize for that confusion.
We switched them up. Uh, switched them around on you, Member Bethel.
Okay. I'm gonna throw you for a loop here then. Thanks for your patience. Uh, what two issues are you most concerned about and what ideas you have for addressing this?
Thank you. Um, the last uh City Council meeting on the um first, I guess it was, uh, there were a number of District One residents who actually brought public comment um to the table. Um, I think one of the things um that I would see as an immediate uh issue that I would want to understand more and how to support the constituents is around the um issues that are happening on South Lincoln between um Amherst and Bates, I believe. Um, it seems to have been a long, longstanding problem for folks in that neighborhood. Uh, and as a District One representative, um, I would make sure, I would want to make sure I was as up to speed as I could be and doing whatever I could uh within the role of council to uh to help to mitigate that issue for the residents who live there. Um, I think in terms of a second issue, um, there were several. I think having sat on a board and committee and hearing again in the December first meeting around the desire to have a work-study session on code enforcement, I also think that it would be really important to have a work session on boards and committees in general. I think that some of what happens in that passing of information from council to boards and commissions, um, especially the advisory ones, is that there's some ambiguity in terms of the process. Um, and I think it would be, it would be fantastic for council and hopefully myself to be part of that, to be in conversation and be into that work, be in that work session. Uh, the committees are an extremely important part um of how residents can interact with the city and most directly interact with the council. Um, I've had uh good, uh, good interactions uh with my council liaison. And so um, I think it's important um for everyone to be able to, to be there, but to know why they're there and to be able to do the best work. Um, people who are involved in those boards and commissions often are uh giving up something else on that evening, right? Giving up their time. And so being respectful of their time and having them um understand what is being brought to them and why it's there, um, I think would be uh, you know, something I'd like to tackle. Um, so we'll go with one big issue and then one homework kind of issue, if that's all right.
Thank you for your answer. I appreciate it.
Member Ward.
Uh, tell us about what you think are three of your greatest strengths and provide examples of those that work in real life. And what you, would you consider to be two areas of growth for you personally? And how would being on council contribute to that?
Thank you. Um, in terms of my greatest uh strengths, um, I feel um my compassion is one of them, uh, one of the three. I feel uh that throughout my professional career and my personal life, uh, I have been associated mostly with nonprofits, with um public governments, with other um organizations that give back to the community. Um, even my first stint in communications in a corporation was helping responders at nine eleven, um, the site of September eleventh, as well as um, yeah. So I think my compassion um is something that's extremely important. And um, and uh, definitely being able to, to hear people uh and bring that compassion to council, I think is really important. So uh compassion would be one. Um, I think my ability to uh navigate and find compromise is another. Um, I have had situations where um I have worked with folks on a series of issues um that uh are, sorry, trying to hard when you have thirty years of your life flashing before your eyes, which hopefully means I'm not dying. So, thank you. Um, I think the um, yeah, I think being able to bring ideas to the table and thread those ideas is really important. I think the best um work product generally comes from those compromises and being able to uh to set something on the, on the table uh that maybe is not something that everything wanted, everyone wanted, but something everyone agreed on at the end is a really fruitful and meaningful. Um, what was my third strength that went out of my mind? Um, in terms of growth, um, remembering things apparently is, is going to be on that list. And so I would hope as my six colleagues, you might help me from time to time remember where I was going in that conversation. So, um, I think I, I'm a look, I mean, part of doing this is, uh, I obviously think I'm skilled and experienced enough to do this, or I wouldn't be sitting in front of you. Part of the growth is going to come from the fact that I want to continue growing and learning. And I think that I have spent a lot of my career behind elected officials, behind ballot initiatives, behind campaigns. And this is the first time that I have truly felt compelled to be in front. Um, I'm generally not the one sitting here. I'm usually the one preparing someone to sit here. And this is a change for me that I think is part of that growth for me, so.
Thank you. Member Russell.
Thank you. And thank you for being here this evening. Um, my question's pretty simple. If the City Council is unable to reach a supermajority to make an appointment, do you intend to run for the seat in a special election?
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, Rick, I, last question that I happen to have is, uh, you know, whether or not there's any additional questions that you happen to have for us. Um, obviously, we still have plenty of time here, and I kind of figured that we would have some time at the end. But obviously, if there's anything else that you want to add about your candidacy, anything else that you want us to know or even the public to know about you, feel free to ask, uh, use this time for that as well.
Yeah, great. Thank you so much. Um, I think just in terms of a couple of other points I wanted to hit that probably were answers to some of these questions uh that I might have missed. Um, beyond bringing constituent voices to the table, uh, as I said, I have been talking to some of the businesses who were talking about the improvements in public safety being a really important part of how they have felt that they can effectively run a business on South Broadway. And so that was really positive to hear, especially uh in what is called the downtown, right? Um, from Hampton North. And so, uh, so that was great to hear. I think folks were super interested in City Center. I don't know that they know how to be vested in it yet or what it really means, but I think people are aware of it. Um, and I think that that's a huge priority for District One. Um, but not just because it's in District One, um, but because I think that is where I would see partnership with the other districts to ensure that all of Anglewood was reflected in that as well. Uh, and not just, I know the district plan just sort of felt like it was mostly District One and hit a little bit of District Two. And um, and I'm excited about the fact that there likely will be another strategic plan as the current one is ending in twenty twenty-five. Uh, so just a huge opportunity to be able to contribute to that. I uh think that I would bring a lot of uh skills and strengths uh as well as counterbalance in that process. Um, I also heard about teen jobs. There's a lot of folks who were focusing on the fact that their kids are having a hard time finding jobs in Anglewood. And so I know we are all committed to making sure that we can stay here, that things are affordable, that there's uh quality of life that so everyone can enjoy again and make the choices that are best for them. Um, and some of that means not sending your kids to Denver to work or to Littleton to work, but getting them to work right here, uh, being able to walk or take a short bus ride and be able to get to a job. And that was something I heard several times from some people. Um, so I just wanted to bring that up as well for anyone who I spoke with that's listening. Um, and then, um, yeah, I just, uh, again, feel that, um, the experience that I have, I guess the third strength, if we can go back to that, um, is that I have spent time um in or consulting with government around ballot initiatives. And I do think that um I have had to learn and understand uh the nuances of how and when you can speak or how you, when you can react to certain issues depending on what side of the table you're on. Uh, obviously, we have had that conversation here in Anglewood over the last few weeks and last year um around um what can one do and how can one be involved in the electoral process if you work for the city or, or are on council, et cetera. Uh, and I have spent time in that space and have shared, presented, consulted on those rules. Um, and so I do think I'd have an opportunity to, to, to be another set of ears uh in that space, as I know you have all made the commitment, uh, moving forward to uh, to be present uh with the city manager and his team on making sure they're following those rules. So, which I think is really important. Um, two issues that I think I would bring up that are not necessarily constituent issues but likely impact constituents is uh development in the city of Anglewood. Extremely important that we continue to develop the city of Anglewood. Extremely important to also be aware of our aging infrastructure and making sure that developers are not just uh feeling like we should be grateful that they're here, um, but that we should be asking them and to contribute to the community. And so if they're uh plugging into systems and services that we know could have impending uh issues or failures in the future, we should be working with them to figure out how to solve those problems now and making that a process across the board where we uh hold those folks to the same standard we hold our own residents with taxes and water bills and all the other things. So I think it's really important. Um, and again, in the budget, I know there's uh been conversations about what the budget might look like in the future. There's obviously state, local, and national issues with budgets happening right now. Um, there's been several large supplementals that have been passed in those six weeks that I've been attending the meetings uh regularly in person. Um, and so really digging in on that too, to be a good partner, to be the seventh set of eyes on that, uh, on those issues, uh, and asking questions and bringing information to the table, I think is going to be really, really important and something that um I seek to do.
Thank you very much, Mr. Somerson. Anything else?
Uh, I do have a quick question.
Sure.
So this is obviously a District One seat. We have two at-large councillors now, four district seats, and the mayor. And I was just curious if anyone wanted to share, or if everyone wanted to share, kind of what their thoughts are on that, the sort of district seat versus an at-large seat, or now in this case, the mayor, who I know sets the agenda. And just was curious what people's thoughts were on, again, either cross collaboration and/or opportunities that district might present over at-large.
Sounds good. Member Ward, go ahead and jump in.
I think I'm probably the only member of this body who has served in both capacities. There's really not a substantive difference, in my opinion. One could argue that the job of representing a council district is less difficult than the job of representing the entire city at-large. But the reality is, we're all making decisions together as a body, for the most part. And if a constituent in District Three calls me, I answer the phone. If a constituent in District Four calls me, I answer the phone. And I'll handle both of those in a strikingly similar manner.
Yeah, I was going to say something very similar, right? I feel, I guess technically I'm serving both roles now, but yeah, when we make a decision in terms of what's on the agenda, the issue does impact the entire city of Inglewood. So I never saw a difference between the two in terms of whether or not you're representing just the district or the city overall. I always felt it was the city overall. When you look at the issues that we're discussing, whether it's development, whether it's safety, it impacts the entire city. So no, I think a lot of the things that you laid out tonight, I think, would serve you well, not only as a District One rep, but for the city at large, so. Anyone else have anything to add? Oh, go ahead, Member Russell.
I actually would like to add, I mean, I've been an at-large council member since I first got on council. At-large council members serve all of the districts. I know that in the past, I've been on council for 10 years, that some districts are pretty protective of their districts and would be upset if the person in District Four called a District One council representative. Yes, we all serve all the people in the city, but the reason that districts, there's four districts, is because the district council representative represents that district specifically. And that ought to be their focus. And then the at-large just are there for, to support in all areas, too. So that's my opinion.
Thank you very much, Member Russell. All right, I see nothing else for members of council. Mr. Somerson, anything else? We've got a few minutes here.
Yeah, I would just close out by saying again, thank you for this opportunity and thank you for anyone who is watching and listening at home. I think it's really important to be involved in this process. I'm excited to have been part of it. I know my family is excited about having been as involved in Inglewood as we have in the short time that we've been here. We plan to call this home for a really long time. And if I, again, earned the privilege of being appointed, which I do see to be a privilege, I would hit the ground running on December 16th to get out and meet as many people as possible and to introduce myself to as many people as possible so that the folks of District One knew they were being represented and represented well. And then would be excited to get out there again and have town halls and other opportunities across the district to meet folks. Neighborhoods, you know, the neighborhood west of Santa Fe, the sort of Pecos, Zuni section of District One, really important. And I, again, want to partner, I would hope, with my fellow city councillors, especially the at-large, to be able to sort of jointly walk those streets together and sit down and have those meetings together and be able to really, again, show folks who might not have time to be in front of this microphone or the desire to be in the front of this microphone, that they hear their words coming through the microphone is extremely important to me and something that I would pretty much make my large goal in the two years filling this seat.
Sounds great. Well, Mr. Somerson, thank you very much for kicking this off for us and setting a good example for the next two nights. Thank you very much for your willingness to serve as well. Appreciate your time tonight. Yeah, and I guess we will be in touch here in about a week in terms of just making a final decision. So thank you so much, Mr. Somerson.
Great, thank you.
All right, I think we're moving on to the second applicant. Take your time. We still, we have a couple minutes until we get to the bottom of the hour, so. I think I see a cup right next to you. All right, Ms. Burpee, I think we are at the bottom of the hour, so I will go ahead and kick us off for the second interview. So up next, we have Ms. Ellie Burpee, obviously another District One resident. Ms. Burpee, we're going to be asking you seven questions tonight. I'm going to start off with the first question. We're going to go around the room. We have 30 minutes for this conversation. Once we get closer to maybe five minutes to the end of the 30 minutes, I may just provide a time check just to make sure that we get through all the questions. So I think that that's it on this regard. So Ms. Burpee, I will, before I start the first question, I'm just going to ask if there's anything that you want to state about yourself or the public, for ourselves, before we get into the first question. And obviously, it's 30 minutes, so there's a good chance that we could get to that at the very end as well, so.
Okay, yeah, let's make sure we answer your questions, and then if you have extra time, I'm happy to add.
Okay, perfect. All right, Ms. Burpee, so my first question for you is, what qualities, characteristics, and vision do you believe you have that make a compelling case for your candidacy as a District One council member?
Thank you for the question. So I... You said qualities and vision? Sorry, was there one other thing?
Qualities, characteristics, and vision.
Qualities, characteristics. Yeah, I became interested in the position because I'm passionate about building community and I love Inglewood. I have been a resident for over a decade, and I've lived in apartments here. I own a home here now, and I just really am inspired by the work I see happening in our city, in our institutions, our staff, our library, our schools. And it has inspired me to want to get involved. And so I think personally, to answer your question more specifically, I have worked in a leadership role for the last eight years. I resigned my position with the nonprofit Kids in Need of Dentistry in April to spend more time with my two young sons, to be home with them during the day. They're two and four. But that position really helped me develop the... A lot of leadership abilities that I think I already possess, but really helped me realize what sort of skills and expertise I really bring to the table. So that I think I'm, as far as leadership is concerned, I believe strongly in listening and leaders who consider leadership a service to be given versus about themselves. And so I believe that I would bring to the table that ability to help others see in themselves what they are good at and develop those skills or where they're talented or where we could improve things. So I hope only to add to the great work that's being done in the city of Inglewood to bring my experiences working in an organization that provided health care to about 12,000 kiddos a year, including kids here in Inglewood. I hope to bring that kind of background, that leadership, that understanding of health care, of the needs of our future generation into this realm, but also get to apply it at a more local level. So my vision, I think, for being on the city council would just be to add, to add my expertise, to add my support, to add my listening ear, because at the end of the day, you know, it is different than working, leading an organization where we're answering to the people who live here, just like myself, my neighbors, regardless of whether they live in a house like me or they live in a tent or not in a house or in an apartment or they want to own a house, as so many of the neighbors here. So I hope to be able to contribute to the work being done in that. I don't know if I asked, answered your questions specifically enough around characteristics. Does anyone have clarifying questions about that?
No, I think you did cover every aspect of that question, so. And we could get back to, at the very end, if there's time available, we could get more specifics. Mayor Perrett, go ahead.
Good evening, Ms. Burpee. My question is a four-parter here, mostly about understanding the city and what your goals are. So I'll try to weave it together so you can remember it. What do you think the city does well? What are its assets? And what do you think could be improved? And based on these things, what goals would you have? And what would you like to accomplish in your two years on council?
Yeah, thank you. What they do well is, I think that's hard to think of anything for me but the people who work in our city. Like, I think that, just like in any organization, I've worked for people are your greatest asset and the talent that I have recognized in the city staff, in the Inglewood school staff, the leadership, the library, the Parks and Rec Department. I mean, I'm just so impressed with the people who work here. So I think your greatest asset is that you have done a great, the city has done a great job of cultivating teams of people who are excited to live here, excited to be involved, have a great passion for being part of their community. As far as what could be improved, there are a lot of, I think, challenges on the horizon for the city with, I mean, quite frankly, what's going on in our country at a national level, it all trickles down. I've seen that in my work in a healthcare organization where, you know, Medicaid funding cuts affected the services we could provide, and I assume that that is trickle-down in some of the things that are happening here or even due to economic recession. And so I, from what I understand of what the city is facing, there are going to be resource challenges, there's going to be budget and expense cuts that are very likely. And how do you prioritize not only retaining the talent that you have within your institutions here in the city of Inglewood, but also the growing need from your citizens? Really, you're, at the end of the day, all of our bosses and our residents, whether they're in the house or not, in an apartment or wherever they live, I think the biggest challenge is just balance. From what I have perceived in city council meetings and such, the biggest challenge is bringing all of those voices together and coming to up with solutions that hopefully help as many of us as can, knowing it's such a diverse, such a diverse city. The third part of that was, what are my goals? Do I have any goals?
Based on those observations.
Yeah. I believe my leadership's job is to listen, to take into account what people are saying. And I think, you know, I was just having a conversation with my husband about this. He works over at Craig Hospital, and I said, "What do you..." We're talking about what, you know, you really love about working as part of that team and the leaders that you love there, you know, love the job. We were both agreeing that in our past, the leaders that are most impactful are people who understand the day-to-day of what our residents are facing. So the person who's, you know, struggling with, you know, water or sewer or traffic issues in their neighborhood, I mean, there's just people struggling with being able to own a home with two working parents, you know, or two working individuals and still can't afford homeownership with decent jobs. There's all sorts of struggles. And so I think that my only goal as part of council would be to support. I think that the role of leadership is to be of service to those they serve. And so I think the specifics of what that would look like would be dictated by those that serve. My first goal would be to understand what those needs are. I don't think you can do that until you're really in it. Was there a fourth part?
It was what would you like to accomplish in two years as a member of council?
It's a short time. It's a short time to learn everything about what the job is and what's required of you. And so my hope would be to quickly, as quickly as possible, onboard and understand. I know there's a lot of structure, a lot of red tape, a lot of policy and things you'll need to understand as a city council member, and be able to dig in as quickly as possible and be of help, be of service, hopefully be a voice that can help unite a group of leadership here. I know it's easier said than done to agree or come to consensus or resolution, but hopefully that is a voice I could add to the table.
Very good, thank you. Member Pring.
Good evening, Ms. Burpee. Thank you for joining us tonight.
Yep, thank you for having us.
Exciting times doing the interviews, so we're happy to have you here. My question is, describe to us what your key, what you believe the key responsibilities of a council role is for District One, and what kind of time do you think it would take? And how would you utilize your time to understand?
I think the key responsibilities are, I said this already, but listening, being available to the people in my district, hearing their concerns and what it is that they need, what it is they most need. And so listening would be a key responsibility, I think. And then along those same lines, that next step after you hear something is to try to do something about it. And so I think key responsibilities would be, listening would be a voice, be a voice for those people in my district, even if that voice is saying things that are hard or different or not popular, than what maybe the group is wanting to hear. I think it's important to speak up for everyone in the group and not just the loudest voices, but also those who might be afraid to speak up. It's important that everyone is heard. So everyone, and I think along those lines, it's a key responsibility of a council member to offer opportunities for that. So I think public comment at city council is an option and a way to do that, and it's great to have. But there are, there has to be ways to, for our citizens who don't feel like that is the right, the one-on-one or a smaller setting or something that feels maybe less intimidating. So maybe also making opportunities for folks to make their voices heard and to get involved. I think a lot of my neighbors in my neighborhood feel that everything's going great in the city, and when I maybe bring up something that I've heard at a city council meeting or that I know is going on or an election, you know, it's... or that I know is going on or an election, you know, oftentimes they're surprised to learn something or they don't know that it's going on. And so I think it's just a big job of, a huge responsibility for that person to be available and a voice for their community. The second part of your question was, will you remind me? Key responsibilities and...
What kind of time do you think it would take? And how would you utilize your time to understand?
It would be hard to say how long that would take. I, not having been in the position or have a job description in front of me, I think, I don't know. I would, I would turn that question back to you guys who are in that role and say, how long does it take? How, how do you go about it? I think the best way to, to start a new role is to ask questions about how people are doing it now. That doesn't mean it's the only way. I certainly have lots of ideas, but I don't think a good leader comes in and just changes things or tries to do their own thing. They, they listen and hear and take, take stock of how things are today and what people are really needing, what is most important. So I think my question would turn around and go back to you guys, maybe not in this interview, but if you should decide to appoint me, I would turn around and say to each one of you, what do you do, what works best? What do, what does this council right now, this group of people need most to help it move forward, move away from conflict? I'd hate to say that, like, we should have no conflict, conflict is health, but move towards resolution on...
Thank you.
Yep.
Member Bethel.
As everyone else has said, thank you so much for being here tonight. This is a challenging process. We appreciate your time.
Thank you.
This is slightly different than Joe's question, though it's going to sound similar.
Okay.
Specifically, what are two issues that you're most concerned about? And what ideas do you have for addressing those issues?
Two issues I have, or two, two issues I'm concerned with. One, I think, is affordability for living in Inglewood. I don't think that's any secret. I know that's something this council is talking about all the time. Affordability and ability for people to have housing. As I've mentioned before, there's like a range of citizens that applies to, but I, I believe it's important or to value our citizens regardless of they live in a house or, like I said, an apartment or in a tent. I think every single human being has its value and should be considered. And at the same time, I should also think we have to keep our neighborhoods safe. And so I think there's, that's such a hard topic for me to come in here right now and tell you what I think you should do about it. It feels prescriptive, perhaps, and inauthentic, but I can tell you, I, I have been excited to see some of the steps that have been taken, and I would be excited to explore what, like, things like the code necks and things like that that have gone on, that are really looking for ways to create more opportunities for people to live and have housing and to care first about our, our people being housed and our cars being housed. That's a huge point of passion for me. I have a car, so I'm not saying I don't need a place to park. I'm just saying priorities. I, I think there are priorities, there's a priority there that's considered. So that's one area that's a big concern for me. I see a lot of people my age, if I moved to Inglewood today, I would not be able to buy a house here. My husband and I both have full-time jobs or had to do it recently. We could not afford to live here. And I love Inglewood, and I think everyone should, I, it just doesn't make, it, it's just this problem that everywhere around the Denver metro area has that has to be solved. So, or we have to do what we can. Another area that's important to me besides that is healthcare. And obviously, I mentioned that's something that I've worked in before, especially for our kids. And so I love seeing what, being, now that my son goes to medic, and I've loved seeing what they're doing to support our kids to be healthy kids and healthy kids are healthy learners. As one of my, my board members used to always say, who worked in Denver Public Schools, I think that the more we can focus on making sure our kids are taken care of, and that means everything from their healthcare to what we're, how we're educating them and how we're providing opportunities in the city for them to develop their, their socials and emotional skills and their concern for their neighbors who look like them, act like them, live like them, or other ways, is very important to me. Maybe that's like healthcare slash our, our kids, because they're really our future. And so that's very important. Thank you for those questions. I, I know that you maybe want a more specific answer, but I, I think I would have to learn more, be part of this group more to...
I appreciate your response, thank you.
Member Ward.
This question is about strengths and weaknesses. Could you give us three of your strengths and provide examples of those used in real life? And two areas of growth for you personally, and how you think that being on council would contribute to that growth?
You guys have very great, long questions. I will do my best to remember that, you might have to remind me. Okay, what are, you said two strengths, three strengths, two weaknesses? And how I would use those strengths? Did I get that right?
Yeah, you can free form it, just...
Okay.
Don't worry too much about the structure of the question.
Okay, redirect me if I get off track. I, my, okay, so maybe I'll start with a weakness because it pertains to this. I am a processor, right? So I can make fast decisions. I have had to do that in my previous position. I like to be able to take into account multiple opinions, lines of thought. I like data. I like numbers and specifics that I can understand and are real alongside human experience and opinion and anecdote. So I don't love to make fast decisions. I also, to your point about this question, or to my point, I guess, about this question, I, I like to process the question and, and have a thoughtful answer for you. So I'm, as you're saying it, I'm, I'm thinking about what you're asking me. So thank you for giving me the, reminding me on your questions when I'm losing track. But yeah, so that we, that is something that can be a weakness, right? Is that I, I don't like to make fast decisions. I, I like to take my time and process. But I can, if need be, I know that sometimes in a leadership role, something that's... Okay, so as far as strengths, I think, I've mentioned this already, but I, I'm, listen, I'm, I have a lot of empathy as a skill that I, a skill or a quality, I guess I should say, that I, I have always possessed, but I think in my, my most recent position with the nonprofit, I have really been stretched to develop more and more. And the most, I think, beautiful developments in that organization, and the most beautiful growth, the most beautiful leadership that developed in my team, was when I could sit and put myself in someone else's shoes and empathize with what they were going through. And so I think being able to really hear someone and not be listening to respond is a, is a really important quality in a, in a leadership role. And I don't have, we don't have time for me to tell you what that looks like or examples of that, but in this, but I can tell you, I, I do think that that's one of my top qualities is I can, I do have the ability to do that, and I enjoy doing that, being others developed that way. Let's see, three strengths. That was one. Okay, so two more, I think, would be, I am a, it was a weakness, and also, I think, a strength. I think our greatest strengths can also be our weaknesses, right? And vice versa. I'm a processor, so I like to evaluate things using not just data and statistics, but also like the human experience. I want to get to know and build relationships with people that I am making decisions that might affect. Or, so I think relationship building is, is kind of a key piece to this job. You can't, can't really develop a relationship with someone, you can't really speak with them. And so being personable, being able to connect with anyone, that's something that I can do, years of practice in the job I've just had and many others. It's just a natural part of my personality. And then I think a third quality that I have that hopefully would be of service in this role would be that I am a strong decision maker. I can make hard decisions. I like to take my time, but when I, I know something is right or I've heard, and I prefer like a consultative decision-making style, right? Not just making it, we've said this, I've said this, with just data that we've heard from everyone that we need to hear from, who has a stake in the outcome. But then we, we agree on a decision and we move on. And I think sometimes the ball doesn't roll your way. I'm sure that happens in this group. I've seen it happen in this group where the decision that made is made is not the one that you wanted, but when you are working together with a team, it's so important that you can leave that at the door when it's, when it's time to move on and, and move on to the next thing. The ability to defend your decisions is important, but also to, to be able to say, hey, I didn't agree with that one, but we have more work to be done. And if we let ourselves get stuck in these begrudging tensions where it's about a personal attack versus what the facts of a situation or something that happened that we didn't like or agree with, nothing good comes out of that. So, you know, we used to always say, where I worked, we had this leadership book club. And it was, we read the book, Daring, Daring to Lead by Brene Brown, and she says in it, you know, you have to be in the arena. If you're not in the arena struggling around these decisions, then you don't have a seat at the table, you don't have a voice at the table. And I believe that's so strong, so, so strong and true here for council, too, is that you're gonna, we're gonna wrestle with decisions. I see you guys do it. I've seen it in many meetings, and it really truly is a struggle sometimes to even watch how hard that can be. But at the end of the day, you just make the decision you make and you move on, and you have to stand by it. You have to move on and, and stand by what you and your colleagues have agreed upon because you, we have more work to do, I repeat myself. Let's see, I think that was three qualities, strengths, and then I gave you one weakness. I'll give you one more, right? Yeah. I, let's see. This question, it's always so hard. Not because I don't have weaknesses, just because I'm like, which one do I tell them about? No, we all have them, and I know that's true. I, I want, yes, I think the, a part about this job that would be very hard for me and that I know is just realist, not unrealistic, I think, wouldn't be a part of it, is that it, unfortunately, what we see happening at a national level with politics becoming personal and about the wrong things, you see it at a local level, too. And honestly, I'm so inspired by what I see at a local level here, at our state level. I see people working together. That's what makes me want to get involved locally. It's all I feel like I can do, is get involved locally. But you still see some of that personal, emotional attack. And I, it is hard, that will be a struggle for me to remain unaffected by personal attacks when I know each, every one of you that I've, I've spoken to here is here because they care about their city, they care about their residents, and that is the same reason I am here. There is no, absolutely no political agenda whatsoever, but to try to serve my community, and I think that is true for each of you that I've spoken to as well. So I think that would be very hard for me to stomach, to feel my integrity questioned or my reasons for being here or because of something I said being twisted. It would be difficult, but it's part of, it's part of the job.
Thank you.
Member Russell, and we have about two minutes left.
I have the easiest question of all of them.
Okay, great. Great, thank you so much.
If the city council is unable to reach a supermajority to make an appointment, do you intend to run for the seat in a special election?
I don't know. That's my answer, sorry. I'll just be very, very transparent. Not because I, I don't, I actually think elections are absolutely the way to have our officials elected. I don't know, though. I don't know the answer to that because it, that entails a much more, much more and different type of work in those four months, right? Where you would have that special runoff election than what I am mentally prepared for. So I think that is a decision I would have to make when that day comes.
I greatly appreciate your honesty and your transparency, because it is a different decision, so...
Yes, absolutely. Yeah. And I, man, I hope, no, I do believe absolutely in elections, but it's, as a citizen, interview aside, I certainly hope that, I have met some of the candidates. You guys have such great candidates, several of them, I haven't met all of them, that I was so impressed with, and I know what it'll cost the taxpayers, myself included, to have a special election for a less than two-year term by the time you get done with it. So may I just say, I hope you guys can reach us. I hope you can reach us.
All right.
But yes, whatever you must do.
All right, thank you.
All right, Ms. Burby, we have about a minute left. There's any closing thoughts that you would like to ask of us? Or is any closing thoughts for the public and for council as well?
I got to share what I wanted to share. Yeah, I just, but, I just, I appreciate the work that all of you do. I know I got to say this to some of you already, but I really am doing this because I have been inspired by what I see you guys doing every single week. And I, I know that it's not easy, and I know many of you come from different opinions and backgrounds. Thank you for doing it. It's a thankless job, I know that, too. I've seen it, and I know, I would be honored to contribute to that, and I would hope only to contribute. And I wouldn't hope to come in and change what you're doing, because I think there's good work being done, but be a part of the group and to hopefully offer unique perspective. And I, I, yeah, thanks for what you're doing, because I think in the world today, myself and my fellow citizens, we need local leadership that is really for the people. You don't see the corruption that you see in other places. Otherwise, it's, it's very overwhelming, the world today for us, and this feels, being involved at a local level feels like something you can actually do and make impact. So thank you, and I, I, yeah, I would just be honored to be a part of it. But I, I know you guys have a big decision with that, and I trust you to do what's best for this. No, that's all I have to say. Do you have any more questions for me?
No, Ms. Burby, we really appreciate your time. I think we're, we're at the 30-minute mark, but really appreciate your willingness to serve with the city. Obviously, we'll be making a decision here in a week on whether or not we are able to come to consensus or whether or not it will go to a special election. But thank you very much for your time tonight, and I guess we'll be in touch. So thank you so much, Ms. Burby.
Great, thank you all.
Yep. Good evening. All right, everyone, we are going to take a 10-minute break before we listen to the next three applicants. So we'll be back at 7:10 for Mr. Brandon Stiller. Thanks, everyone. All right, so everyone, we are now back. It's about 7:10. We're up to our third candidate for this evening. We have Mr. Brandon Stiller. Mr. Stiller, Stiller, thank you very much for making time for us tonight. We're going to be asking you seven questions. We have 30 minutes to go through those questions. Probably around five minutes remaining within a 30-minute time block. I may just give a little time check to just let you know that we're coming up to that point. So I'll be asking the first question. They'll be just going around the room here. And Mr. Stiller, before I get to my very first question, just wanted to see if you had anything that you wanted to state about yourself, not only for ourselves in council, but also for the members at large or, excuse me, the community at large.
Thanks, I appreciate it. Probably not. I imagine I'll circle back at the end and maybe have some things to fill in if we don't get to the questions. But I just want to say I appreciate everyone's time and your service, staff included. I know that it makes for a long night on a Monday night and a Tuesday night. So thanks for your service and thanks for the opportunity.
No, well, thank you very much. So, Mr. Stiller, I'll start off with the first question then. My question for you is what qualities, characteristics, and vision do you believe you have that make a compelling case for your candidacy as a district one council member?
Thank you. My brain got a little hung up on distinguishing between qualities and characteristics, so I'm going to kind of lump them together, I think. I would say integrity, loyalty, and empathy are probably the three strongest traits that I possess. Those are the sort of guiding principles that I live my life with. I I think in terms of vision, what I would like to see is a community that fosters everyone in the way in which I feel I have been privileged enough to be fostered in this community and in the communities that I've lived as well.
That's great. Thank you very much, Mr. Stiller. Mayor Protem.
Good evening, Mr. Stiller. I have a four-part question here for you, so be prepared.
I should have brought a pen.
Okay. I'll try to break it down here for you. What do you think the city does well? What do you think could be improved? And based on these observations, what goals do you have? And finally, what would you like to accomplish in your two years on council if you were to get selected?
Great, thank you for the question. I think something that this city does really well is it makes, it seems to me, makes a consistent effort to meet citizens where they are. I don't know that it always works, so that would be one of my goals as well, to continue to improve that. I do think that I see the effort to reach out to constituents, to let folks know what services are available, to let them know really what a what a special place Inglewood is. And I want to see more of that. I think that in addition, I would like to see, I want to see more effort maybe around the Tri-Cities homelessness initiative. I'd like to see some of, I know that there is a lot of suffering in our city, and I would want to see the city do even more there. And I want to be very careful not to undermine the work that I know is being done because it's good and it's important work. But those are the, those are the areas that I would see for improvement. In terms of goals for the two years, this one is a little bit interesting to me, and I imagine there may be some questions that'll touch on it a little bit more later. Because this is an appointed position, I don't really feel necessarily that I would want to bring a platform to it. Instead, what I would want to do is help city council continue the work that's already being done. I would like to be an asset to city council, a deliberate voice in the room that helps continue the conversation in a thoughtful and productive way and in the ways that you already work. But I would like to contribute that to that and be an asset to city council while learning more about what my constituents really want. So I don't have a goal beyond a selfish goal of wanting to serve my city. I don't really have a specific goal beyond that at this moment. I think that that would take some time to develop, and I think it should come from the people of District One and not from me particularly, again, because this would be an appointment.
Very good, thank you.
Was that all of the?
That was all, I think you caught all four of them.
Yes.
Good job.
Thank you.
Member Pring.
Thank you. Thank you for being here with us tonight.
Thank you.
I like how you're not getting out of the park, so. This is just a twofold question instead of four. So tell us what you think the key responsibilities of being a council member for District One would be? And then what kind of time do you think it would take? And how would you utilize your time to to understand and represent the city as a?
I'm going to start with the second question and then probably ask you to repeat the first one. So the amount of time that I think it would take, there is no amount of time that I think that you will ever succeed. I don't think you'll ever get to the end of that. I think that you need to take constant time to understand your constituents' needs. I, I, I would love to say that I would immediately have a firm grasp of of my district's needs beyond how I perceive them and beyond how my neighbors and the people that I talk to at King Supers perceive them. I would love to say that I could get a firm grasp on that right away, but I think it's ever evolving, it's ever changing, and I don't think that, I don't think that there is a timeframe that you should put on it even. And the first part of your question, would you mind repeating it? I apologize.
Sure. It's what do you think are the key responsibilities of your council role representing District One?
Never stop asking those questions. Never stop asking the questions that you need to learn your constituency. Never, never shut down, never, never give up on really elevating the voices of your neighbors. And of course, you guys do, you guys do so much more than that. I mean, you know, there's the chartered things that that city council must accomplish. And I think I would look forward to digging into that and learning more specifically about that in on the job. But yeah, I would say making sure that you are with empathy, with compassion, and with like wholehearted fervor, never ceasing to elevate the voices of your constituents.
Thank you for that response. I love the word fervor, by the way.
Fervor, thank you, I appreciate it.
Member Bethel.
Thanks for being here tonight. We appreciate your time. What two issues are you most concerned about and what ideas do you have for addressing?
Great, thank you. Personally, I mentioned the, just the suffering that I know some of our residents, particularly our unhoused residents, face. I think that that's something that's always on the forefront of my mind. I also really love and am really passionate about sustainability and environmental sustainability. I love things like, I live right across from the Depot Park. I love that park. I, I feel like perhaps maybe it's, I don't know if, I wouldn't use the word languishing, but I feel like there was a lot of excitement around it. I would see elementary school tours going and then looking at the pollinator habitat right there at Depot Park from Bishop. I love that. And I, and I know that, I know that the city's doing really great work on that front, and I would love to see more of that. Sort of tangentially, my neighbor who's been my best friend for, since high school, she's lived in the other half of the duplex with us for nearly a decade. It's a really great setup that I have. She won't take her kid to Cushing Park. And I feel like you've done, the city's done so much great work with that park, but it still feels unsafe and unclean to her. And I, I would love to see some improvement around that. And again, not to undermine the efforts that I know are actively taking place there. But those are some of the things that immediately come to mind. In terms of how I would like to accomplish that and what I would work to do, I believe that was the second part of the question. I think that community partners like Cafe 180 are such a huge part of helping solve and ease our, the really real crisis that affects the whole entire metro area in terms of those that are unhoused and those that need resources and access to resources. So I would make an effort to understand even better beyond something, some, an organization like Cafe 180, what organizations and resources are there for my constituents and how those can potentially be bolstered simply by my presence on council.
Thanks for your response. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Member Ward.
Question about strengths and weaknesses. What would you say are three of your greatest strengths? And can you provide examples of those that work in real life? And what do you believe are two areas of growth for you personally, and how would being on council contribute to that growth?
I think I started with the first question. Hopefully, I repeat the answer in the same way that I said it. I do believe that integrity, loyalty, and compassion, empathy, I think those are are traits that I bring, and those are things that I bring to my work. I, I believe you asked for examples of those things in my job. I tend to be, in terms of loyalty, I suppose, I've, I've, I've worked at the same organization. It's a nonprofit media company that works with governments and nonprofits. We are passionate about elevating the voices of our nonprofit partners. And I use this as an example of loyalty, I suppose, because I've been there for 13 years. I can't, I can't give up when I, when I find something that I really care about. I want to make sure that I, I represent that in the truest way that I possibly can. And I suppose maybe that kind of leads into one of the maybe more negative qualities that I possess and that I don't always know exactly when to stop. I want to keep going. I want to make sure that I'm striving towards my goals constantly, and I'm, I, I have a little bit of a difficult time finding the cutoff there often. And that sometimes represents itself as overworking, whether that's the little literal hours that I am spending working or maybe sometimes overworking a problem a little bit, not knowing when I have actually found the solution necessarily. I need to make sure that I'm really being mindful of that in my work. So not to totally shoot myself in the foot, but those are, that's some of the qualities that I imagine I could probably work on. I'm not sure I gave you three and two, but if you have any follow-up questions, I'd be happy to try.
Good enough, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Member Russell.
Thank you, and thank you for being here tonight. My question is much easier than the rest. If the city council is unable to reach a super majority to make an appointment, do you intend to run for the seat in a special election?
I thought you said this was an easy question. I don't know. I thought. You know, I hadn't really considered it until this evening. I thought that question may be asked. I had planned initially, prior to even learning of the vacancy and the appointment, I had planned on running in 2027, 27, for certain. And I'm having a difficult time giving you a hard yes on this question simply because of the timeframe. I, I worry about how effective I would be in the short amount of time. I would, so I will, I will give you a tentative yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, Mr. Stiller, I guess now, so last question is actually, what type of questions do you happen to have for us? So you can ask questions of us now if there's anything that you haven't answered that you wanted to cover from some of the earlier questions. from some of the earlier questions, you could use that time for this as well. But we have plenty of time. We got, we have about 15 minutes or so to, uh, ask any question of us or provide more on what you're looking to accomplish.
I should have talked more, I guess, um.
This is your time now.
Oh, good, thank you, thank you. Yeah, I suppose as a council, I'm wondering what, I don't know, are there any immediate skill gaps that come to mind for you all? Like, is there a dynamic gap? Is there something that you feel you would really like to see in the candidate that fills this role?
Anyone want to jump in? Cause I can jump in. So I'll start off, so nothing specific that I think that we're looking for. Uh, or that I'm looking for, I guess, in a sense. I'm always interested in just having somebody with a different perspective. That has a, a fresh set of eyes on the city. That's not coming in here to copy one of us. I want them to come in with their own perspective on what it is that they're looking to accomplish or how they want to better the city themselves. That, that's number one. Two, I guess the, uh, the other thing about this role, I think is, you know, um, being able to make the tough decisions, because there's tough decisions that do come in front of us. And, um, you know, whether or not you can stand on your values, on your principles and be able to move forward with a decision based off of that. I think that that's, that's kind of what I would want out of a council member. I think it's a little bit different than the way that you phrase the question. But I think that that's two of the main things for me is like being able to stand on principle, on, on your values when making a decision. And then two, just coming on with a prince, fresh set of eyes on what it is that you're, that we're potentially missing that is needed within the city. Anyone else want to weigh in on that question? Go ahead, Member Prank.
Sure, I'll weigh in. Just to build on what the mayor said, um, I really liked that you said that you shouldn't come with a platform. I agree with that wholeheartedly. Um, I very much am interested in seeing people that are independent thinkers, um, that are not coming in with preconceived notions or a particular stance on anything. It is a tough job. It's a lot to absorb at first. And so having the confidence to come in and make decisions, but doing that based on learning and understanding and some critical thinking. I, the other point I wanted to make. I, I lose it now, but for me, that's, um, the most important quality. I, I think that, um, a lot of our constituents might see a lot of kind of division amongst council. I, I don't think that we lack any particular skill set. But just seeing the diversity of mindset, diversity of approach to conversations and being able to help, um, take what's here and work with that to have a richer conversation.
Great, I appreciate both of those, thank you.
Don't see anything, oh, go ahead, Member Ward.
I guess I was going to hit a little bit on what Member Prank said as well. The, the character trait I think that's most needed right now is, is sort of a uniter. Someone that can travel in multiple political circles and sort of work with people who have differing ideas to, to try to come together, um, without experiencing personality conflict or other, other complications that, that sometimes make that process difficult.
I'm your guy. No, uh, thank you, I really do appreciate that response. And, and I, I will say, uh, just in, in response to that, I, 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 I'm no, uh, this is, I'm, I know this is going to get me the super majority. I, I am stalwart, I am a little bit stubborn and, and I pride myself in being an excellent communicator. And part of my entire job, um, is, is speaking with people and conveying messages in a way that resonates universally. That's what I really pride myself in and that's what I would hope to bring to the role. So thank you for those comments, I appreciate it.
I'm still yours, so.
I better think of something really good to say. Um, I guess I'll just say, uh, I, I told some members, uh, while we were during the meet and greet, uh, you know, my mom was a single mom, uh, when she was in her early twenties and she was able to buy her first house in Inglewood. Uh, she is just an absolute inspiration. I, I lived in Inglewood, uh, until about third grade. And, uh, she decided she wanted to build a farm out in Sedalia, so we went and did that ourselves. And, uh, I, I, I came back, my grandmother lived in, I think she moved to Inglewood in 1994. Uh, so we were, I was always here, you know, eating at Frank's Pizza. Rest in peace, I'll miss it, uh, that sourdough crust, man. I do think that Inglewood is a really special place. I said that earlier. I, I plan to be here, uh, for a long time. I, I want to contribute, uh, to the place that I love and the place that I live. And, uh, if this is not my opportunity to do so, then I look forward to finding that opportunity in another way. And I know our paths will cross again.
Mr. Stiller, thank you very much. Um, I'll just, uh, ask members of council if there's anything else that, that you need for Mr. Stiller, based on any of his responses or anything that may be, uh, since we just have a few minutes. Don't see anything else? Well, Mr. Stiller, thank you very much, like, uh, no, thank you very much for your time tonight. Thank you very much for your answers, your willingness to serve. Really appreciated our conversation tonight and just, uh, it's, it's hard to come in here and, and, uh, you know, kind of just speak to a lot of the questions that we happen to have that were pretty long-winded on our side. But no, we're just very thankful for you, uh, making the time for us. And we'll be in touch, I guess, here in about a week. So, uh, we'll be making the decision at that point whether or not we're able to appoint. If not, then it'll go to a special election, uh, next year, so.
Beautiful, well, uh, again, I appreciate your service, everyone. It really means a lot and, uh, thanks for your time and good luck. I know it's, uh, not an easy decision, I'm sure, so.
Well, it was great to meet you, thank you very much, Mr. Stiller.
You as well, thanks.
Guess we're now on to Mr. Chisholm. Did we want to just move straight to Mr. Chisholm? Anybody disagree with them? Okay. I think I see Stephanie coming in. Good evening, Mr. Chisholm. That's it. You're in it now. All right, so everyone, we're on to our fourth applicant tonight. This is, uh, Michael Chisholm. Uh, Michael, we are going to be asking you seven questions here tonight. We have 30 minutes to answer these questions. Right around, uh, minute 25 or so, I'll, I'll probably give a time check, just so you know that we're down to about five minutes or so. I'm going to ask the first question and we're just going to go around the room. And if there's any questions at the end, then you can ask anything of us as well, so. Uh, so, Michael, I'll give you the opportunity. Is there anything that you want to start off with, uh, for ourselves or for members of the community that may not know you? If not, I could just go straight to the first question. Actually, if you want to turn on the mic. Of course, but if you wanted to turn on the mic. There you are.
I just collected my thoughts and I, I did have some introductory thoughts I wanted to share with you. I, uh, hadn't really thought about applying for this position until about three weeks ago. Talked to a few people and all of a sudden, uh, it became a real possibility in my thinking. But just so you know, I've lived in Inglewood for the last 10 years. My wife and I own a house on the South Block, 3,000 Block, Cherokee Street. I've been in Inglewood for 10 years and I've been involved in lots of things, which I can outline now or later. I, I'm not a Johnny-come-lately, the city council and processes and committees and the work that you all do. I volunteer and continue to volunteer a lot in Inglewood. And I go through some of those examples of things that I do. And I enjoy Inglewood, take advantage of the things that are here. Proud of the city, proud of contributions the neighborhood makes.
Well, thank you very much for that, Mr. Chisholm. Uh, my first question for you is, what qualities, characteristics and vision do you believe you have that make a compelling case for your candidacy as a District One council member?
I have wisdom, I have experience.
Do you mind speaking into the mic, Michael?
I'm sorry, I said I have wisdom and I have experience. I have a, uh, a calculating mind that can balance, make decisions, uh, with reasonable thought and discretion. I like people and I like this community. And I'd like to see this community continue on the positive track that I see that it's on. I think I'm a people, I'm a people person. I'm approachable, listen to folks and I'm not afraid to make a decision.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chisholm. Mayor Pretem.
Good evening, Mr. Chisholm.
Good evening.
My question has four parts, uh, so I'll just roll through them here. Number one, what do you think the city does well?
I'm going to write these down.
What do you think could be improved?
Okay.
Um, and based on these observations, what goals do you have? And what would you like to, to accomplish in your two years on council where you'd be appointed?
And I've got three minutes to answer that? Okay. I think the city does a very good job of listening and paying attention. There's always room for improvement. So there's always going to be the criticism that council isn't listening enough or they're not trying hard enough. I think council does a very noble job of trying to listen to all sides of the story and to consider. In the 10 years I've lived in Inglewood, I've seen progress. I've seen progress in the physical environment, in the streets, the infrastructure. Uh, I've seen progress on the quality of the meetings I attend. I think people are engaged. I know people are engaged and they give a hoot. They aren't, they aren't just taking things for granted. I also see, uh, an influx of young families coming into this community, which is very exciting for me. And my heart goes out to them. I think that's the lifeblood of a vital community. And I think council has paid attention to them. And I think needs to continue to pay attention to them because that's, that's the energy, that's the future of the city. What, what have I seen improve, Joe? Is that the, the next part of it?
What do you think could be improved?
Oh, I'm sorry. Like I said, communication can always be improved. When I think back on Code Next, uh, 2020 hindsight's always perfect. I do think there were communication breakdowns. I think there were misunderstandings. I think they were honest. I don't think there was any deviousness, but that makes it possible for people to become wary and suspicious. If, if, if they don't have their facts, if they don't have a proactive communication, it's easy for the imagination to run wild and it can be frightening. And when people get frightened, it's, it's not pleasant and emotions can turn negative very quickly. I think, um, going forward, council can improve the way it listens and the way it communicates. And I have a background in communications and marketing and healthcare. And I have some strong feelings on how things, how many little things can contribute to big results in terms of allaying anxieties and fear on the part of the citizens that what are they up to? What are they doing? Why are they doing this? Why aren't they doing that? My experience has been you, there's always an answer to that, but there's not always time, uh, to explain it and to present it. So that's a challenge, but there is room for improvement, uh, and there are possible ways of doing it. My personal goals, uh, would be to be able to put a finger on, uh, accomplishments. I, I don't like to plan to plan. I like to plan for results. At the end of two years, I'd like to put a finger on something that said I had, I touched that or part of that influence came from me. Uh, city center development's real exciting for me. I think there's tremendous opportunity for city, for the city to do exciting things. I would love to touch that. I would love to have influence. I have very strong feelings about how I think that development should proceed. South Broadway is another one. I think it's a sleeping giant. I think South Broadway, uh, again, there's some planning efforts underway right now, that's good. Needs to be some more fuel in the tank and there needs to be a constant push to keep those things moving. So, um, those two come to mind of, I see things are going to happen. And I would like to shape or touch how some of those things happen. As far as accomplishments, I would hope that I could contribute, uh, to the collaboration within city council, uh, the teamwork, the camaraderie. We don't all have to be best friends on city council, I understand that. But the opportunity to build a very healthy, positive, uh, team environment where healthy disagreement and discourse can occur, where an example can be set, where respectful, uh, communications happens at city council level and sets the tone for the town. I believe, I believe that, uh, many, many citizens in town look up to city council and they, and they will follow suit. They see city council acting in an honorable, respectful way. It will increase the likelihood, all the communications in town. So I hope, I hope again, I could contribute to that and, um, keep, keep council and the city on the high road and, uh, and, and set the example that we want to set.
Very good, thank you.
Uh, Member Prank.
Thank you, good evening, Mr. Chisholm. Thanks for being with us tonight. I have a two-fold question for you. One, what do you think are your key responsibilities, um, of the, being a council member of District One? And then two, what kind of time do you think it would take? And how would you utilize your time to understand and represent them?
Okay. I, my key responsibilities would be paying attention to the people in District One. I literally walk the streets now through my volunteer work. I work in the urban garden. I, I work, um, over in the pollinator garden. I talk to people a lot and I listen. If I were on city council, I would continue to knock on doors. I would continue to walk those streets. And I've even thought about having a T-shirt or something that says, "Talk to me. I'm on city council, ask me a question." I have no problem wearing that billboard, walking around District One. Uh, the other part of that is listening's wonderful, but taking action is also required. So my responsibility would be if, if I, if I sensed a consensus or a theme or a problem that was somewhat pervasive in District One, and I can rattle off a few right now that I know are relevant to District One, I have a responsibility to bring that to council. I have a responsibility to try to get things on the agenda. I have a responsibility to push councils to make decisions or to ponder things or to think about things or to study things. So, uh, again, with respect, uh, it's a two-way street. I have to listen to the constituents and I have to respect their point of view. Even if I don't agree with them, I, I would want them to know, I hear them. I would want them to know that I'm considering what they're saying. And then it, it has to go forward. I can't sit on it. I have to bring it to council. I have to work within council, uh, to the best of my ability to try to get those decisions to the forefront of this is something we need to talk about. This is something that we need to decide. As far as my time, I know council members put lots and lots of hours in. It's, it's, you all are not overpaid, I know that. In my mind, I'm thinking it's probably 25, 30 hours a week minimum of my time that I'd have to put into this job. When I look at what I see council doing in terms of evening meetings, subcommittees, uh, study sessions, homework, reading assignments. When I ran for office two years ago, I, I had my eyes open to the volumes of words that you have to process, that you have to read. It's, it's not a hobby job, it's a real job. And, um, I would, I would relish the opportunity to jump into that. I have the time, I have the energy to do it and I also have the smarts to do it.
Thank you for that response.
Member Bethel.
Good evening, Mr. Chisholm, and thanks for being here.
Thank you.
What two issues are you most concerned about and what ideas do you have for addressing those issues?
To make sure I understand, what?
To make sure I understand, what issues am I most concerned about?
Yes, sir.
Quality of life issues. I'm into sustainability in a very sincere way. And by sustainability, that encompasses a whole lot of things, ranging from a healthy job environment to clean air, clean water, birds and the bees, and the flowers and the trees. I think Inglewood has, I love the name, Inglewood. It's got trees. It's got parks. It's got all those things. It's a distinguishing characteristic of the city. It needs more. I'm concerned when I smell methane gas. I think it's wonderful, the recapture over the sewage treatment plant. I think it's fantastic. I think there's room for improvement. When I sit out in my backyard and have a cocktail on a Friday evening, and I get a whiff of something, I wanna know what that is. And it's not all the time. It's, but that's a quality of life issue. Those are the kinds of things that, that get me going, because dang it, that's the quality of life. The air we breathe, and, and, you know, we know children suffer from asthma, and we know children in urban areas have lung problems. So we know the front range in Colorado is polluted. We also know that state legislature is looking at freeing up money for municipalities to clean up methane leaks. So those things hit my buttons. Those things tell me, where's the money? Where's the problem? How do we measure it? How do we fix it? How do we address it? We don't live in a perfect world. I understand that. But there are opportunities for improvement. So, again, back to the other question, two years from now, I would hope that we would have measurable improvement in air quality, that we'd have measurable improvement in safety, and that we could put our fingers on it, feel good about it, and then move, move the goals farther ahead.
Okay. Thank you for your response. I appreciate that.
Member Ward.
Questions about your strengths and weaknesses? What would you say are your three greatest strengths and provide examples of those in real life? What would you say are two areas of growth for you personally? And how would being on council contribute to that growth?
Well, I have so many strengths, Steve. I'm good with people. I get along with people. I like to get along with people. I don't like to fight. I don't like conflict. I don't like anger. I don't like negative emotions. I'm pretty tolerant. I'm, I'm very tolerant. My whole life, people said things to me like, "Why do you hang out with that guy?" Or, "How do you like that person?" And I said, "Just get a kick out of him." I get a pick, a kick out of people, and I like eccentric. I like eccentric personnel. They make life interesting. And I also know there's always an element of truth in what anybody says. So even if we're disagreeing on something, I know there's a grain of truth inside of your side of the argument that I need to try to find, and hopefully you could do the same. So I think I'm a conversationalist. I think I'm a listener. And I have kindness. I don't, I don't, I'm not a bully. I don't, I don't wanna defeat the person I'm disagreeing with, because that's the same person who could be a great part going forward. So I, I think my skills of interacting with John Q. Public, or Mary Q. Public, or whoever it might be, brings a lot to my leadership skills. My leadership style and my goal as a leader was to grow people. My proudest accomplishments, when I look back at my career, were young people that I grew, and I mentored them, and I helped them. And, and I am exceedingly proud of that, of being able to take somebody under my wing, guide them, and, and watch them flourish. So I think growing other people, I guess, is what I'm saying. I, I have a gift for that. I don't know if I answered your question.
Well, obviously, you're under no obligation, but would you care to talk about any weaknesses you may have?
Do I have to? I have to catch myself, and I work on it. When I get to a point of frustration, when I get to a point where I, I wanna throw my hands up in the air, I've gotta catch myself, because at that point, when my emotions start to creep in, I realize this is not good. So it's time for me to go walk around the building three times and say a prayer, or do something that, that calms me down. Don't get me wrong, I'm not a hothead. I don't, I don't do that a lot, but I have learned through experience to read my signals and to know, "Mike, you need to calm, calm down here. Breathe, breathe in, breathe out. This too will pass." And I'm getting better at that, but that's, that's real. And I'm sure you all have experienced the same thing, frustration, when you feel like you're hitting your head against the same brick wall, and the wall's not moving. So at least if I can detach and say, "It is a brick wall, and it's me hitting my head against the brick wall," that's my, that's my enlightenment goal I'm working on. Thank you.
Member Russell.
Good evening, Mr. Chisholm. So I have a simple question. I mean, some people haven't found it real simple, but if the city council is unable to reach a supermajority to make an appointment, do you intend to run for the seat in a special election?
I, I've thought about this. I have very little enthusiasm for the thought of running in a special election. And that's not, that's not just bad attitude on my part. It has to do with my philosophy, and my energy, and what I see going on in Inglewood. But I have very, I have no enthusiasm for running in a District One general election. A couple, a couple reasons come to mind. I did a little homework. The fastest that that spot would be filled would be 90 days. That's three months that this city would not have that spot filled. That's three months that District One would not have this spot filled. That's three months that this council could be deadlocked. So that's not healthy for all the things that I believe in. The other thing, that's roughly, that's 15% of a two-year term. So already, you're taking, and time is precious, most valuable commodity. So you're gonna take 15% of two years, push it off to the side. And I'm talking in the best of all worlds 90 days. And then some rough research says, we're probably talking a minimum of $40,000. I know this council's counting pennies. Thank you for counting pennies. Keep up the good work. $40,000? I have a hard time with that. So that's where my enthusiasm wanes. I, I just feel like, what I wanna say to this group is, please choose someone. And if you don't choose me, choose someone. It's good for the city. It's not about me, it's about the city. Have the authority. Have, you have the people that voted you into office. Don't blush. Make a decision. Take this city forward. And I, and I mean that sincerely. If I don't get this position, I'm still gonna be happy. I'm still gonna come to meetings. You're still gonna see me. I'll drive you crazy. But that's part of what I think I'm supposed to be doing for this community. And anyways, I, I hope I answered your question.
I appreciate that. You did answer the question. Thank you.
Mr. Chisholm, I have the last question, which is, do you happen to have any questions for us? We have about eight minutes.
No, I don't have any questions for you, but I have some things I wanna say to you.
Yeah, so yeah, you can use the last eight minutes to, yeah, anything that hasn't been covered.
And there's, that's no slight. You have communicated well, so I don't, I don't have any black holes of, of misunderstanding or confusion coming from you. But I put some things down, and I thought, I have been involved in this community. I served as the chairperson of the Sustainability Commission. I served two terms. I was term limited out. I'm currently serving on CAC, or soon the compliance terminology coming in. I'm soon to be term limited out on that. I helped kick off a proposal for the Pollinator Friendly Landscaping, and that's a decision that the council's looking at now. I also ran for city council two years ago for the at-large position. I continue to volunteer in Inglewood. I planted and maintained the Rec Center flower beds over the last three years. So if you ever saw the flowers in front of the Rec Center for the last three years, that was me. I maintain a garden plot over in the urban gardens, Inglewood Urban Gardens, and I maintain the grounds in general. I enjoy doing it. Been doing it for three years. I also led the maintenance and the cleanup efforts at Depot Park. It was run down about a year and a half ago, so I've been working on that garden for the last two years. I would love to walk you through the Pollinator Garden, show you what we've done. It's really impressive. I'm proud of it. I enjoy Inglewood. I use the Rec Center regularly. I play pickleball at the Malley Center and at the Rec Center. And I'm in the book club, the, the Malley Library Book Club. So I interact in the community. I know people. It's a great community. I enjoy living here, and I will continue to enjoy living here. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chisholm. As you know, we have another night of interviews tomorrow night. We'll be looking to make a decision next Monday night. If we're unable to come to a decision, then obviously, then we will have to go to a special election, and we'll make that decision, or state that in early January. So, Mr. Chisholm, you still have about five minutes. Anything else you wanna add?
Boy, usually have more words than I have time to speak. Just optimism. I think, I think there's a good vibe in this city. I think people are coming together. I think people are tuning in in a good way. I have interacted with some of you on different occasions. I've always felt it was respectful. Didn't always agree on every issue, but I never left the meeting angry. I never left frustrated. Sometimes I left motivated to do more homework. I also appreciated the fact that as a citizen, I don't have the information. So it's probably hard for you to sit and listen to someone like me go off with an opinion. I know this much of the background of the issue that I'm talking. So I've learned to respect, in terms of issues that you struggle with. For example, the downtown development, I think I said at one of the meetings, I trust you all are doing your, I trust you know more about it than I or any other citizen. That's why you do what you do. I think citizens do trust. Despite criticism, contrary points of view, I think Inglewood would track. Nothing's perfect. What, what was the Churchill saying I liked? The perfection stands in the way of progress? That's true. There is no perfect downtown development, no perfect South Broadway. I taught, there's gone by graduate school level. I always graded on improvement. I, I really meant that. You come into a class, you're engaged, learning, improving, and that's about all you hope? I think that's the way we should judge the city. Are we improving better today than two years? I believe it is. I said, above and beyond my candidacy, or whatever we wanna call it, keep up the good work. Right track.
Mr. Chisholm, thank you very much for your willingness to serve. Thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you.
We will be in touch here in about a week, so.
All righty. Have a good evening.
Have a great evening. Good evening, Mrs. Sessario.
Good evening, everybody.
All right. Thank you very much for making time for us tonight.
Thank you.
So I know we're a couple minutes before eight o'clock.
Okay.
Um, I guess we will go ahead and get started, if that's okay with you, Mrs. Sessario.
Great. Thanks.
All right. Perfect. So our last applicant for this evening is Amy Sessario. Amy, we are gonna be asking you seven questions. We have 30 minutes to answer those seven questions. Around the 25-minute mark, I'll, I'll go ahead and let you know that we're down to about the last five minutes. So I will be asking the first question, and then we're just gonna be going to my left and around the room. And before I get to my first question, Mrs. Sessario, I just, if there's anything that you wanna start off with, or if you wanna wait until the end to provide a little bit of background about yourself, or not only ourselves, but also for those that are listening in.
Well, yeah, I think I'll say a few things. My name's Amy Sessario. I'm a Realtor in the Denver metro area for, for 26 years. I moved to Inglewood about five years ago and had a few things that was very important to me, and I immediately emailed my city council representative and received a response within a few hours and was very impressed, and felt really good about it. And I felt really happy that I moved to a community where that happened. I also was just, over the few years, concerned about other things that were happening in the city, and I inserted myself and, and got a warm welcome from everybody involved. And so that's part of why I'm here tonight. When I knew Othaniel and Rita were running, I immediately knew I wanted to run. I wanted to really think things through and really be very methodical and make sure that it's what I wanted to do. But no matter if it was for District One, or if it was for the whole, I'm sorry, I just lost my train of.
At-large.
Yeah, at-large. I really felt like I had a lot of good questions and a lot of good experiences that I wanted to share, not only with this group, but with the community. So.
Perfect. Thank you so much, Mrs. Sessario. So my first question from me is, what qualities, characteristics, and vision do you believe you have that make a compelling case for your candidacy as a District One council member?
Um, okay. I think I'm a good listener. I think I'm a good communicator. I've been told I ask the questions that everybody else is thinking, and that people don't necessarily wanna say out loud. And I am someone who will pick up the phone. If I see that there's a problem, I wanna pick up the phone. I wanna have a conversation. And I not only wanna understand the problem, but I want to figure out how we can solve the problem, how we can feel like not only everyone's being heard, but there isn't a winner and a loser, that we have a really good communication on how to solve the problem, and everybody feels that there is a consensus in that. I'm a community builder, and I have always been a community builder. Part of being a Realtor, real estate agent, Realtor, is we don't just sell houses, but we sell communities. And I feel like, once I landed in Inglewood, that it just was a warm, welcoming community, and I loved the people around me.
Thank you very much. Mayor Protem.
Good evening, Ms. Sessario. My question for you is a four-parter here. What do you think the city does well? What do you think could be improved? And based on these observations, what goals do you have? And what would you like to accomplish in two years on city council, where you'd be appointed?
Um, what the city does well, communicate. So from the beginning, whether it was my city council person, or I got that magazine in the mail, great communication. I've seen actually a lot of improvement over the last few years in that communication back to the community. So I'm a social media person, and so I actually sometimes learn about what's going on through social media. And so I've loved seeing that improvement. I think there's always room for more improvement in, in communicating. I mean, I, we all evolve, right? What works for us two years ago in communicating? through a, um, um, oh gosh, forgot what the word is. Um, you know, when you do the groups that you'd all talk it through and learn about it, like a, um, oh gosh.
Study session?
Yeah, kind of a planning, it wasn't a planning session, but it was with the, um, the Budget Committee and Planning and Zoning. And, um, one of the, or where was I going with that? Um, one of the things that I, oh, I know where I was going, is even though I jumped in with both feet and felt really comfortable in talking about zoning and planning and budget, um, I saw that there was a little bit of a shortfall there in onboarding somebody onto that, um, onto that, uh, commission. And so I don't know how anybody else feels on their commissions, but I just thought, oh, well, that is a way. And, and I think our whole group kind of came up with that consensus in just kind of the things that we talked about. Um, so maybe that would be something that could be improved. I loved being on Elevate Inglewood. Oh my God, that was amazing. So those eight weeks of being able to learn like the ins and outs of how the city works, how the city works together, being able to, um, meet the Water Commissioner and talk through all of this stuff that we want to talk about with water, you know, all those things. Um, that was really fun. My goals, right? Goals and what do I want to accomplish? I think those are my last two things. Um, my goals. Um, if I could do anything with this group, I hope it would be, um, be a uniter and a community builder, whether that's from our District One or it's within. Either way, um, I think one of the most important things that's going to happen in District One is the, um, um, city center development. And I think it will cause a lot of consternation for some people and I think it will cause a lot of excitement for others. And my goal and my hope and dream for this, um, for the city would be that everybody who wants to be involved and who wants to have a say gets that and that they feel like they can leave an imprint in the city. Um, and they feel like that it is their city and that they feel like that this city hub, even though it is in District One, is really a reflection of what our city is about and, and they had a hand in it. And so I hope that we can, when the developers come, and I will tell you, I hope you guys do appoint somebody because if we don't in District One, we're going to be six months without somebody. And right now, in the next few months, when things start happening with that developer, it's the most important time to engage our community. And that will be a big challenge, but that's a challenge that I'm going to love to take on if, if appointed. And that would be a big accomplishment. Okay, did I, did I get that?
Yeah, you did great. Very good. Thank you.
Okay.
Member Pring.
Thank you for being here, Ms. Sisario. There we go. Um, appreciate your time tonight. Um, my question is twofold. First off, can you tell us what you think the key responsibilities are to be a council member or have a council member role in District One? And then secondly, what kind of time do you think it would take? Uh, and how would you utilize your time to understand and represent?
Okay, I'm going to start with the time thing because I think the time will probably take more time than any of us experience. I mean, that we would anticipate, right? Um, because I think that especially in your first year, you're doing a lot of learning, fire hose. I think one thing I bring to the table is that being on Planning and Zoning and going through Elevate Inglewood, I feel like maybe it wouldn't be as much of a surprise in how things work. Um, in Planning and Zoning, we even looked at the budget from last year and I'm not going to say I'm intimately familiar, but I would say that I'm a little bit more familiar than a lot of people in the city, um, working through that last year prior to you guys seeing it. Um, and I think that is a big responsibility, um, is understanding the budget and making sure that we are doing the right thing for our, our constituents, for the city, for the community, all of that. Um, I think, um, communicating well, setting expectations, I think that's another big one. I think that's really hard as a constituent of being, understanding like how far can I go with something? How, what do I expect if I ask these questions? And I think setting expectations is a really good thing that, that I would, could help do. Um, and then I think another part of it is being forward-thinking. So you guys have been working on the zoning for many years. You guys have done a really good job of working and getting infrastructure back. But being that forward thinker, hopefully I could bring that to the table, bringing some thoughts and ideas that maybe you guys haven't seen or talked about, whether I've seen them in another city, um, here or somewhere else across the country. I would, I would love to bring those thoughts and not, and knowing that any of my thoughts, it isn't necessarily that it's that I want them to happen, but I would love to have the conversation and make sure that we think things all the way through.
Thank you. Great.
Thank you.
Member Bethel.
Mrs. Sario, thank you for your time and thank you for being here. Um, what two issues are you most concerned about and what ideas do you have for addressing those issues?
Um, two issues. Um, if I have to narrow it down, it's going to be safety is number one. Um, that was one of my issues when I first moved onto the block that I moved onto. Um, and it will continue to be one. And whether that means walking across Logan to get to Bates Logan Park safely, or that means walking to downtown on Broadway to go visit the restaurants, or that means walking or leaving my car in the city center parking lot to ride the light rail, safety for everybody. Whether that means it's for, I'll go back to kids, any of our residents, any of our visitors from our other cities and for the unhoused. And I just want everybody in our city to feel safe, so much so that I even like called the chief of police to make sure that I had the answers that I need to. I'm that person who if I see a problem, I just go right at it. I want to talk to somebody. I want to have a conversation and I want to know what can happen about it, what, what I can do to either help it, help with it or make something happen. Um, my other issue is city center development. I am very passionate about, uh, middle market housing. I am a mom and I am a daughter and I have come to the city council meetings to tell you guys this and, and I, whenever I come to city council, it's usually about housing. Um, but I want a place for everybody. I want a place where my 34-year-old son could buy a house and I want a place where if my dad wanted to downsize, that he could come live close to me. And I want everybody to have, I want there to be housing for everybody in our city. And so I'm just very passionate that we try and make sure that that continues. And the way to do that in my mind is just to make sure we go after that middle market housing because if we don't, the divide is going to be greater. The rich will get richer and the poor will get poorer. And we, we, we need to make sure that everybody's okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Ward.
So let's talk about strengths and areas for growth. Uh, what would you say are three of your greatest strengths? And please provide examples of those in real life. And what are two areas for growth for you personally and how would being on council contribute to that?
Okay, my strengths, um, I think one of my strengths, one of many, not only is the communication, but in my job as a Realtor, we often are going head-to-head on things, right? We're either representing a buyer or we're representing a seller. And we go into those negotiations, sometimes very head-on and hard, and sometimes we go at them, um, making sure everybody feels good about the outcome, right? And everybody has an expectation and understanding of where they want to go. So I can't always be in control of that, but what I can be in control of is communicate really well and set the expectations for my buyers and my sellers. And so I feel like I would bring that to my constituents and also to this group of communicating well. Um, um, gosh, I'm trying to think of what else. Um, and I'm just a uniter. Like I usually by the end of our, when we get to a closing table, almost everybody wants to go to the closing table together because they've had such a good transaction, like they have ended up liking the buyer and the seller. I'm just that uniter and I want everybody to have a good experience and that's just how I live life. I, I, I treat people the way I want to be treated and I feel like there is no, there's no use in making our lives harder than they need to be if we can help each other be better. Um, my, uh, let me see. Another, I guess my other strengths is that I'm familiar with zoning. I'm familiar with the budget. Um, going through Elevate Inglewood, I'm very familiar with a lot of the things happening in Inglewood. And my two areas of growth, or did you say two or three areas of growth?
Two.
Two. I'm going to be really excited to see whatever those areas of growth are. Um, I think they could be in a lot of different ways. I think I have a pretty good idea of what you guys do on the outside, but I'm going to be really excited to kind of see the backend of things on how you guys, whether you're negotiating with the city staff or you're negotiating with like how things happen on the outside. How do I say that? Um, I think my area of growth is just going to be learning how this out really works. Yeah. How it just really works. It seems like you would know how it works, but I feel like that there's going to be a lot of surprises. And, um, I'll be excited to learn that.
Thank you. Member Russell.
It's good to have you here, Mrs. Sario. And, um, I keep saying that my question is the easiest, but maybe not.
Okay.
Um, my question is if city, if the city council is unable to reach a super majority to make an appointment, do you intend to run for the seat in a special election?
I do. Yeah. Yeah. Like I said earlier, I was, I wanted to run one way or the other. I really did a lot of homework though before doing this. I talked to a lot of people before doing, before, um, before filling out my application. Um, I wanted to be very thoughtful. I would probably have to step down from a couple of other committees if I do this. And so I wanted to make sure that this was the right decision, not only for me, but for the city and for my constituents. And, um, um, I think there was one other thing I was going to add to what you asked me, even though it was the easiest questions, I probably am the longest answer. Um, but yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Mrs. Sario, last question for me is, do you happen to have any questions for us?
Um.
We have about 12 minutes.
Oh, we do? Wow.
Yeah.
We did good on time. Well, I think first of all, I want to say thank you to all of you. Um, I have met all of you at different points over the last few years of when I have come to speak at a city council meeting, very passionate about it, um, whatever I was going to speak about that night, which have been several things. Um, I want to thank you for your guys' time tonight and your thoughtful questions, actually. They were all very, I hadn't, we didn't know the questions, so, um, um, so I was a little bit nervous about that, so thank you. I think they were all really good questions. If you guys had one more question to ask me, what would it be?
Anybody have anything? See now we're, you're putting the tables on us.
What do you like best about each of us?
About what?
About each of us.
Oh my gosh. Okay. Um, okay, I will tell you. I'm going to start. I'm going to start with Rita. I'm going to start with Rita. I love how passionate Rita is and I love that every time that you come, one thing you said Rita a lot, about a year ago, I heard you say that this job took, takes a lot of reading and a lot of thinking and understanding and I appreciate that. Um, Steve, you ask really hard and thoughtful questions about the budget that I wouldn't always think about. And so I think that is a really, I think that's really good because sometimes your questions spur another question for me, but I wouldn't have thought about it without you. I'm going to come back to you, Jack. Okay? Tina, I think Tina, you ask really good questions too. Um, you a lot of times, I think are going to go down one road and you don't. You, you stop and you think about a question that I wouldn't have had either. And I think that you're always very thoughtful in your communication and I think that you're, you're very, um, yeah, I think thoughtful in your communication. I think that is like one of the things I love the most. Um, Joe. Um, Joe's very decisive and I like that he's very decisive and I love how much you are, I love how passionate you are about zoning. I don't always agree with you on everything, but I agree with you on a lot of things, but you're very passionate about it and you're very thoughtful because you want everybody to have a good place to live and you want, so I love that. And Nathaniel, I, Nathaniel is, was my city council person. So he's the one who, when I first, um, had a problem and I had like a five-part problem and he emailed me back within a couple of hours and was just very thorough and thought very hard and, um, and, uh, what else? What do I want to say? You were just a really good communicator. So hopefully I could be as good of a communicator as you are.
Thank you so much.
Thank you guys so much.
All right. Any, I, I know we still have about nine minutes left, uh, Mrs. Sario. So if there's any closing thoughts, anything else you want to add? If not, it's not necessary, but just want to give you time.
Yeah, I think, I, I did say that I hope that you guys, did I say that part out loud? Or did I just think it, that I hope you guys appoint somebody? Okay. I won't reiterate that then, because that's just what it is, so. Oh, Jack, I didn't go to Jack. So Jack is our.
I thought I was off the hook.
I'm, no, you're not. Jack, you're our newest city council and I watched you speak a couple of times, um, at different community events. I tried to go as, to meet as many community events as I could when everybody was running and just listen to everybody's platform and I think you're going to be a really good addition. And, um, I love that you jumped in with both feet on the first meeting and, um, you're going to have a lot of fun. Okay. Thank you all for your time.
And thank you for your time and thank you. Thank you for your willingness to serve as well, uh, Mrs. Sario. We have another night of meetings tomorrow night. Um, we will look to see if we can appoint someone next week. So next Monday night, if not, then it will go to a special election and we'll make that decision in January.
Will you do that? Um, so you'll announce publicly, if, if you guys appoint?
Yes.
You'll announce publicly on Monday night?
We have to do it on Monday night.
Okay, got it.
So it will have to occur if we're not able to come to a consensus study or excuse me, if we're not able to have a super majority of five, six, then, um, that would be known that night as well, but we have to make a decision next Monday night.
Okay. So pay attention to that. Okay. Well, thank you guys.
So, Mrs. Sario, thank you very much for your time and again, thank you very much for your willingness to serve and, uh, we'll be in touch. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Have a good night.
All right, everyone. That concludes, uh, tonight's round of, uh, interviews. We'll be back, uh, tomorrow night. Uh, I'm not sure if there's anything that anyone wants to add for tonight. So actually I'll, I'll just ask the question. I'm not sure, I'll just ask it tonight, but Member Russell, I know that you weren't planning on being here today and tomorrow. We made the decision not to deliberate after Tuesday's session just because you weren't going to be in attendance. Does that change now with, uh, all six of us present? Any thoughts on that, Member Russell?
I'm really kind of wondering if we should just take the week anyway.
Yeah. I'm kind of in the same boat.
Yeah, because I just think it's.
I think it's a big decision and, um, also just the fact that not everyone may listen tomorrow night and so they probably want to hear our thought process during the regular meeting. So I think it probably would be best for us to save the deliberation until the night of.
Right. So let me ask you this. This was not, this was recorded, but was it broadcast live?
It should be live streamed.
I'm not sure how fair that is for the people.
Oh, you mean in terms of people already having their questions?
Right.
Yeah.
For the people that, um, interview tonight.
That didn't know the questions in advance. Right. Yeah.
Because everybody did interviews tomorrow night, will have had time to watch it all.
Yeah. They're live streamed, but also that we weren't, the other aspect of it is that anyone could have sat in at. Oh, you mean in terms of people already having questions, yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
For the people that, um,
That didn't know the questions in advance, right? Yeah.
Because everybody did interviews tomorrow night. We'll have time to watch it all.
Yeah, they're livestreamed, but also that we weren't, the other aspect of it is that anyone could have sat in at any point during the interview as well. So there was that opportunity for anyone that was a, uh, candidate, they could have sat in. So I, I could have been tough either way in either direction, but I understand what you're concerned.
Okay.
Yeah. We'll see. Alright. Thank you.
Member Bethel.
We could, uh, add a question to tomorrow night's proceedings to keep people on their toes. Is that is that an option? Is that something that anyone's interested in or are we satisfied with, um, where questions stand and how folks are able to prepare or not prepare for these questions?
Honestly, uh, from my point of view, I'm not as concerned about the, whether or not people have the questions in advance. Um, actually I didn't even think about that in terms of, so I, I don't have as much concern. I'm fine just keeping the same questions as is.
I'm fine with keeping the same questions as is, but I think maybe we should have thought about that.
Yeah.
Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Member Russell. Alright, anything else from anyone? If not, we are adjourned. We'll see everyone tomorrow night at 6:00 PM. Have a good evening, everyone.